Members, we now start the session on housing. We welcome Ms. Winnie Ho, Secretary for Housing and her team for joining us. Members who wish to speak, please press the request to speak button now. I will first invite the secretary to say a few words. Over to you, Ms. Ho.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank members. Housing is a livelihood issue that the government attaches great importance to. The Housing Bureau and the Housing Department are committed to ensuring the delivery of relevant housing initiatives through resort measures to boost the quantity, speed, efficiency, and quality, as well as making the appropriate resource and financial arrangements. Our goal is to make Hong Kong a better place for living and working. On public housing supply, the government has identified enough land to meet these target of about three hundred and eight thousand public housing units in the next ten years. As for traditional public rental housing, the Hong Kong Housing Authority will continue to optimize the construction processes and methods through the application of innovative tech- construction technologies and to enable early delivery of PRH flats and moving in by residents. Meanwhile, light public housing will be built under the government-led approach to fill this short-term gap of public housing supply at the soonest. The target is to build about thirty thousand units by twenty twenty seven to twenty eight. The first batch will consist seventeen thousand units. The design and construction works started in December twenty twenty three, with anticipated intake in the first quarter of next year. I am very grateful to the Finance Committee for approving the proposals of funding and post-creation for the second batch of LPH projects in February this year. The government has also identified sites for delivering over twenty one thousand transitional housing units, exceeding our original target of twenty thousand units. As at late March this year, about thirteen thousand six hundred units have been put into service. Another six thousand three hundred units or so are expected to come on stream this year, and the remaining twelve hundred units will be completed in the first quarter of twenty twenty five. The government will continue to press ahead with the work, striving to provide the most pragmatic assistance to those with housing needs as soon as possible. The government has been committed to enriching the housing ladder by providing subsidized sale flats to help lower-to-middle-income families to achieve home ownership, thus enabling better off PRH residents to move up the social, the housing ladder. With about nine thousand six hundred homeownership scheme flats and recovered tenants' purchase scheme flats up- put up for sale under HOS twenty twenty three, as well as about twenty four hundred green form subsidized homeownership scheme flats under GSH twenty twenty three, more than twelve thousand flats are available in total. We've also launched the private subsidized sale flat pilot scheme to tap into the market forces and encourage private developers to take part in developing SSFs. The site at Chairman Road, Chai Wan, was put up for tender in late March. As for Started Homes for Hong Kong Residents project, with the SH project put up for sale earlier by the Urban Renewal Authority and those currently taken forward by the government, a total of over sixty six hundred SH flats can be provided. On private housing supply, the government will secure land for the production of around eighty thousand private housing units in the coming five years. Based on the latest projection, the supply of firsthand private residential flats for the coming three to four years will be about a hundred and nine thousand units. At the same time, the government has been keeping a close watch on the residential property market. After prudent consideration of the overall current situation, the government canceled all demand-side management measures for residential properties from the date of announcement of the twenty twenty four to twenty five budget to increase the supply of flats in the secondary market, facilitate the turnover of the property market, and ease the financial burden on Hong Kong permanent residents who already own flats and non-HKPLs in purchasing residential properties. Thanks to the support of local members, the Stamp Duty Amendment Bill twenty twenty four was passed by the Legislative Council on April tenth. We note that the market response has been positive after the announcement of the dropping of all DSMMs. Market information from various channels points to increased transactions in both primary and secondary markets, which show that market confidence has strengthened. Property prices remain largely steady. The government will continue to closely monitor the situation of the residential property market and take appropriate measures to- in response to market changes having regard to evolving circumstances. The gradual increase in the supply of public housing has also provided us with more room to tackle the issue of subdivided units. The government is currently giving support to families living in inadequate housing in various ways, including the Task Force on Tackling the Issue of Subdivided Units, led by the Deputy Financial Secretary, will put forward proposals on minimum standards of these living conditions for SDU's eradication of substandard SDUs in an orderly manner. The Task Force, relevant policy bureaus, and departments are taking forward such work at full steam to address the issue of SDUs in a comprehensive manner. The dedicated team under the Rating and Evaluation Department will continue to perform duties related to Part Four A of the Landlord and Tenant Consolidation Ordinance and that they implement tenancy control on SDUs. The team will also step up publicity to promote the ordinance. The government launched the three-year cash allowance trial scheme in late June twenty twenty one. As at the end of February this year, we had dispersed a total of four point two five billion dollars in cash allowance to about ninety seven thousand five hundred eligible PRH general applicant households. The scheme is due to expire in mid-two thousand twenty four. More traditional PRH, transitional housing, and LPH projects will be completed gradually in the coming year to improve the living conditions of grassroots families on the PRH waiting list. In view of this, the government has decided to extend the scheme for one year until June twenty twenty five. The scheme will be subject to further review in due course. Chairman, these efforts show the current term government is determined to resolve housing problems and build a more balanced housing ladder, a ladder that is more robust, to provide more suitable accommodation to people from all walks of life. Again, I thank members for their concern for housing matters and for the great ideas members gave us. I also thank members for their support for my team. My colleagues and I welcome questions from members. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Winnie Ho.
Fifteen members are waiting to speak. We have ninety minutes for this session, so I will give each member five minutes for first. But you can leave some time left. You don't have to use up all five minutes, Mr. Vincent Cheng. Is the first one to start? The others are Mr. Chan Si-ho, Mr. Scott Lern, Mr. Michael Lu, Mr. Andrew Lam, Mr. Chan Haokong, Dr. Lo Wai Kwok, Mr. Kit Sun Yang, Mr. Lem Chen Sing, Ms. Carmen Khan, Ms. Yoonas Young, Dr. Wendy Hong, Professor Priscilla Lern, Ms. Doring Kong, and Professor James Lau. We will start with Mr. Vincent Cheng.
Thank you, Chairman. I have some long questions. I get to, I get to speak first. HB oh oh seven. First of all, I thank the Housing Bureau about resolving the issue about SDUs. We saw a blaze in Yaomatei. The Housing Bureau made available transitional housing to accommodate the people affected by the fire. That was very helpful. This shows the issue of SDUs warrants our attention. The next two years will be key. How do we do better in protecting those residents? Still, I want to find out about the costs. HB oh oh seven, I asked about the expenses associated with LPH light public housing. So thirteen point five four million dollars are set aside. The operating cost will be more than four billion dollars. Is this four billion dollars part of the fourteen billion dollar grand total mentioned earlier? The management fee will be a thousand dollars per unit. Does it make sense to have so high a management fee for those new units? Will the residents be expected to afford to shoulder that cost? That would be a huge cost to bear. Can we compress that cost for the LPH on Yaopark Road? That project should be open for applications soon. So will we adopt the same measure as transitional housing? Would there be a one-stop platform for applicants for the LPH on Yaopark Road?
Secretary. First, on the operating expenses for LPH. This is the operating expenses, not just management. We are taking a three-in-one approach. We are bringing several factors under one roof. Now, let's look at traditional public rental housing. There are cleaners, security guards, there is a contract, and then for maintenance and repairs, another contract. But for light public housing, we have not just cleaning and security guards. There is also provision of services. When we consulted people about light public housing, we were told that people wanted facilities at public, light public housing estates. People also care about the transport links at Sealam, Loon Pai to step up the provision of facilities, which will benefit the entire community. So in Sealam, we will put a bus stop there with four bus routes. Next, near Sealam, there is a waterfront promenade. People would like to see that space opened up for jogging and stroll. The operating expenses cover different aspects of services. So for bus stops, those stops are normally covered by the highways department's expenses for traditional public rental housing. And for welfare facilities, that, those facilities will be covered by the social welfare department's budget. Here, for light public housing, we will cover many different aspects. We want to have a single operating contract that will cover a range of services based on the feedback we got during our consultation of stakeholders about light public housing. So here, operating expenses will cover not just maintenance, repairs, cleaners, and security guards. Now, I turn to the project on Yaopark Road. In the middle of this year, we will open the applica- we will see the application open to applicants. There will be a centralized platform. We will let people know how it works. Mr. Chan Si-ho.
Thank you, Chairman. HB oh three two. Question from Mr. Andrew Lam about the Task Force on Tackling the Issue of Subdivided Units. The reply says that in ten months' time, after in-depth studies, the government will come up with a feasible solution that can fix substandard housing in an orderly manner. No member will doubt the government's determination. The government has a clear goal. One matter top of mind to Mr. Andrew Lam and to me is the approach. Is the approach suitable? Is the approach effective? The secretary told us more than once that a firm would be engaged to visit subdivided units to gather data. This is to help the task force learn about the latest situation of households living in SDUs. For these visits, and you, we see a spot checks, and we are doing random sampling. How can the government assure us that the sample will be fully representative of different kinds of tenants living in SDUs in different districts, involving SDUs of different kinds? Without representative data, there will be problems coming up in enforcement because the government may have missed something if the data are not representative enough. Many people talk to me about their concerns. Now, on the question of eradicating SDUs. SDUs are not bad in themselves. If they are in line with the law, why eradicate SDUs? The goal is to eradicate substandard SDUs. So I want to learn more about the government's approach. How can the government assure people that you can zero in on the issues that you have in mind? Secretary.
The Task Force on Tackling the Issue of Subdivided Units is meeting with political parties and consulting people about SDUs. Members may have heard views. We welcome such views from members. People support the effort to address the issue about SDUs, but this issue is complex. Our approach, including the criteria we go by, are something that we welcome views from members. We have engaged a consultant. As Mr. Chan said, this consultant firm will visit SDU households. The firm will talk to SDU residents. We have also consulted the Census and Statistics Department. We have a hundred thousand SDU households. So we asked the CNSD how much data we will need to make the data representative. So we have expert opinion on this, and we have looked at the advice from the Census and Statistics Department. So we are gathering the data. We will put together a report to the Chief Executive based on the data. Once we have the report, we will also share the data with members to show members that we will come up with a feasible solution that can address the issue in an orderly way. I thank the member for his concern for the approach we're taking.
Chairman, members are concerned whether within ten months' time, the task force is going to find a feasible solution. I suggest that the government makes use of different types of resources, such as the district care teams. If you make use of the entire network, including different community groups and organizations, you may be able to find an effective solution. Next, Mr. Scott Lern. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on HB oh oh three and HB oh four oh. HB oh oh three is a question from Mr. Gary Chen. It is about the different sizes of light public housing units. I asked a similar question before, but I understand that there is more updated information from the government. For instance, one-to-two persons unit account for seventy percent, and three-to-four persons and four-to-five persons units account for twenty percent and ten percent respectively. I agree that light public housing can help people who have been waiting for public rental housing units for very long. They will be able to get a better living environment while they are waiting for PRH. The reality, however, is that SDU tenants, they are families. So will there be a mismatch if you have seventy percent of the LPH units for one-to-two persons? Also, can you adopt a more flexible approach in construction? Say in the future, if there are more three-to-four person families applying for LPH units, can there be LPH units of a larger size to accommodate these applicants? I want to know if you will adopt a more flexible approach in terms of your design and construction. My other question is about, um, public rental housing. Yesterday, we saw the expiry date of the application for GSH flat. We have some thirty thousand applicants at least. And so the oversubscription rate will be about ten times. We see the demand for GSH flats for production of PRH units after twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight. We are yet to see which ones are GSH flats and which ones are PRH flats. Can you let us know the split so that, um, applicants will be we can, will be able to make an informed choice? There's been discussion recently about the cost of, um, building LPH units. LPH units are going to help solve a lot of problems. I think you should really make use of the resources you have effectively so that the entire community can benefit from the LPH units. You should not only look at how to save costs. Instead, you should, um, think of how to benefit the entire neighborhood. Thank you. Secretary.
On this distribution of different, um, types of LPH units, we have units for one-to-two persons, three-to-four persons, as well as four-to-five persons. So the proportion is seven to two to one. We've had a lot of internal discussions about the distribution of different types of LPH units. We have transitional housing, and we've got data from transitional housing. We see that in urban area, in terms of transitional housing, families would like to stay in the urban area. So we will have more, uh, units of larger size in the urban areas. And in the new territories, there is a high demand for smaller units. So we look at the distribution differently in the new territories and the urban area. There are smaller units, um, in new territories. For instance, we have identified lots of vacant school premises. There are more larger-sized units in these vacant school premises. Sixty to seventy percent of LPH units are the larger ones on, um, vacant school premises. On, um, the issue about GSH flats, we've just, um, received all the applications yesterday. So the oversubscription rate is over twenty times. Uh, we will announce, um, the details in due course when we get more information. Now, LPH un, uh, projects are crucial. They can help provide people with a better living environment and help people move up the housing ladder. It will, uh, these projects will benefit the entire society. That's why I said, uh, these LPH projects are not just benefiting the LPH residents. We are still inviting tenders at this stage. We'll have more information later. We will put in place a, um, and a rewarding and penalty mechanism to improve the LPH, um, projects.
Mr. Michael Lu. We, our party cares about SDU tenants. How is the, um, LTCO going to help combat unscrupulous acts of, um, SDU landlords? Uh, we pay a lot of attention. I'd like to follow up on, um, oh six four and oh six two. On oh six four, there is mention that there are three thousand and eighty-four cases in which SDU tenants overcharge, um, SDU landlords overcharge, um, tenants. However, successful prosecution cases only amount to a few dozens. For a lot of the cases, only warning letters were issued. Was it because you didn't have enough evidence that's why, um, prosecution failed? Were there any difficulties that you encountered when you tried to initiate prosecution? For instance, SDU landlords might give pressure to tenants. And if they, um, if tenants come forward, they may not be able to have their leases renewed by the landlord. Will you help rehalt SDU tenants in case they are kicked out by their landlords because they come forward as witnesses? RVD set up a fifteen-member strong dedicated task force, and the operating cost is fifty point nine four million dollars every year. But they only check about one thousand SDU households every year. That means for each household, you have to spend fifty thousand dollars. Is it cost-effective? Can it be done in a more cost-effective way? We have over a hundred thousand SDU households in Hong Kong, but every year you only check one percent of them, which is one thousand SDU households. How can you visit more SDU households to see whether there are unscrupulous landlords that exploit their tenants? You should make sure that this dedicated fa- task force that you set up really is effective. You have to check more SDU households. Otherwise, you don't need fifty people running these, um, this task force. Secretary.
Let me give an overall response in terms of enforcement details. I will invite, uh, Mr. Xu to tell you more. According to the information I have, in terms of the prosecution numbers, well, as you know, we have to talk to DOJ as we gather evidence. By October twenty twenty two, we only have one successful prosecution case. By twenty twenty three, we had eighty-two successful prosecutions. Within two to three years' time, the number reached two hundred and one. So you see that there is an increasing number of successful prosecutions. Mr. Michael Lu mentioned that we set up a dedicated team. The dedicated team goes door to door to tell SDU tenants about their rights. The team also helps us promote about transitional housing to SDU tenants, especially SDU tenants which are facing a very poor living environment. They are told that they can apply for transitional housing. The dedicated team that consists of about fifty staff is set up by the RVD. They are taking the initiative to check one thousand SDU households every year. Whether we can put in place more resources to the team, well, Mr. Xu and I are looking into it. Let me, uh, invite Mr. Xu to tell you more. Mr. Kevin Xu, please. We are determined to step up enforcement, and our team is dedicated to check as many SDU households as possible. On enforcement, we take the initiative to identify any contraventions. For instance, we hold checks. We also have KPIs. And we check whether SDU landlords are complying with the ordinance. We also talk to SDU tenants. For SDU tenants that we cannot reach out to, in case there are contraventions, we appeal to them to make reports to us to curb, um, any unscrupulous acts. According to the law, SDU tenants are protected as they have their own rights. And there is a certain restriction to the increase of rent imposed on SDU tenants on the fifteen-member strong task force. The KPIs that we follow are just one ways to, are just one way for us to, um, step up enforcement. We will keep an close eye on the progress of our checks on landlords, and we also strike to see if there is any follow-up action that we have to take. If there are contraventions, we will gather evidence and will consider instituting prosecutions. Even if we manage to meet the target before the end of year, we will still continue to carry out checks. Thank you. Mr. Andrew Lam.
I work with a body that runs three transitional housing projects. O O three, question from Mister Gary Chen. I want to write on that question. It's about the key performance indicators for light public housing. The reply gives us a specific figure. Seventy percent of the units are units for one to two persons. More than eighty thousand people have been on the waiting list for more than three years. So that's the queue for category A applicants. There is an obvious overlap of this waiting list with applicants for transitional housing. So, once the light public housing units are out, has the government assessed what impact there will be on the running of transitional housing? If there will be a marked impact, is there a contingency plan about what to do? Light public housing and transitional housing are both transitional in nature. We're also going to address the issue of subdivided units. To do that, I have a question. Will light public housing and transitional housing become routine measures? With these uni- housing units become standing measures to address subdivided units? There has been public attention drawn to the outsourced management approach. Is there a need to keep outsourcing the management of those units, light public housing and transitional housing? Why not have the housing department manage those housing units instead? Secretary. We all know that for transitional housing, there are category A and category B applicants. Category A, people who have been on the waiting list for PRH for more than three years. Category B covers applicants served by the bodies running those housing projects. So even for someone on the waiting list for PRH for less than three years, they can be on list B. For transitional housing, there is flexibility. It depends on the district and the circumstances of each applicant. There is a way to assess applicants. The bodies running the transitional housing can adjust the ratio. For roughly seven hundred projects, the eighty-twenty split has been adjusted to sixty-forty or fifty-fifty. This flexibility in adjusting the number of applicants under category A and category B gives us flexibility based on the circumstances. We want to keep that flexibility. We will keep in view changes in demand for transitional housing after the light public housing units come out. As we said, when we were asking for the funding for LPH, we plan in five-year cycles for LPH flats. If there is a need in the district for light public housing, we can consider lengthening the surface of those LPH flats. But for now, we stick to five-year timeframes as we plan LPH flats. Chairman. The question is whether LPH and transitional housing will become standing policies. The secretary mentioned the five-year planning cycle, but I was asking about the policy. Anything from Ed, from you, secretary? For the policies today, we look at five-year horizons. So at this point, light public housing is not a standing policy. Mister Chen Hau-Feng, O O seven and O one one. O O seven, a question from me. This has to do with the operating cost of light public housing. This is a question close to the heart of many people. I cannot quite make sense of the figures, so four point three nine billion dollars, that's the operating cost that covers the provision of services by NGOs. Is the figure four point three nine billion dollars, is this an en- the annual operating cost or does this cover five years? Now, for the figure thirteen point five four million dollars, how does this figure interact with the four point three nine billion dollar figure? In twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, thirteen point five four million dollars has been reserved. I I can't quite figure out how these two figures interact with each other. Now, the per square foot management cost is three point seven dollars. That's pricey for the public. If possible, we would like to see a lower management cost. Can we minimize the management cost? Building those flats is costly enough, and now we are confronted with these management costs. We want to support people living in inadequate housing, but we cannot throw money recklessly at the problem either. Now, O one one. In twenty twenty-seven to twenty-eight, the project is expected to be completed. It's a public rental housing GSH flat, four hundred units. I got wind that this project in the southern district was supposed to be GSH flats. But then, to play catch-up in public rental housing, this project may become PRH instead. These four hundred units will have little impact on the redevelopment of Wafu Estate. So people would like these four hundred units to remain as GSH flats for young families to achieve homeownership in the same district. So I just want the government to note this suggestion from the community. So first, about the operating costs of LPH. Four point three nine billion dollars. That figure covers the operating costs over five years. We look at five-year horizons for light public housing flats. So four point three nine billion dollars will cover the expenses over five years. Now, for the other figure, thirteen point five four million dollars. That figure is for the estimate of twenty twenty-four to twenty-five. Because in twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, we will see the first batch of LPH flats completed. And then over the next few years, we will see more units. That's why for twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, the estimate is thirteen point five four million dollars. Now, for the project on Wa Loak Path. This is in the area where the redevelopment of the Wafu Estate will take place. I invite my colleague Daniel to tell us more about that. Mister Daniel Leng.
Now, the Wa Lo- the project on Wa Loak Path will be a decanting estate for Wafu Estates redevelopment. So this will be a public rental housing estate. In taking forward the Wafu redevelopment, we will start with Walking Street. And then there will be phases. For Wa Loak Path, we will make an announcement when appropriate as part of the second batch of receiving estates. So that's all from me. I was making a suggestion. The local residents told us they would like to see the project on Wa Loak Path remain as GSH flats. Mister Dr. Loai Kwok.
Thank you, Chairman. HB O four two. About light public housing. It's about the reuse of LPH materials. LPH flats cost social resources to build. We want to help people in inadequate housing, waiting for public rental housing. We want to improve the living conditions of these people, especially for households with children. We want children to have a better environment to grow up in. That takes social resources. Of course, there is value created from the use of such resources. But light public housing takes a huge amount of money to build within a few years. How do we get better value for money? So that would involve reusing the materials of LPH flats. The reply says ninety-five percent of the building materials can be reused. But where can these materials be reused? I don't see a detailed reply on that. I'm not very happy with the reply. Areas for reuse include quarters, storage, site, construction sites, and site offices. We're talking about thirty thousand light public housing flats. I doubt there will be many sites that can absorb all those materials. But in future public rental housing units, we may be able to reuse those materials, those MIC modules. Let's have a design where the modules in the modular integrated construction can be reused in the future. And you can demolish the future OPH units and also use those modules for future PLH units. It's thirty thousand units. Say you find other ways to reuse those MIC modules. Where can you store those modules? That's a big question as well. One possibility is to sell those modules to other places. So my question is, on reusing the MIC modules from the LPH flats for public rental housing, what are the government's plans? Thank you. Are we using the MIC modules from LPH flats? Now, we have had transitional housing projects. Those projects serve as examples. The project in Nam Chuen two twenty, the modules there are used in Wong Yut Tan. And then in Song Wong Toi, the materials are reused in Choi Hong. Or rather Choi Hing. Our colleagues witnessed the transfer of the MIC modules from Song Wong Toi to the project in Choi Hing where the reassembling happened. The process took ten minutes. The modules were there. We saw how the modules were put together again so that the containers could be reused. That's how we can build flats quickly. And we can also drive the development of building technologies. So that's a positive development. Now to reply to Doctor Lo on his question. The thirty thousand units will not end their service at the same time. For the Kai Tech project, the site will be returned to the Development Bureau after five years. But for other sites, say in Choi Hing, the site was reserved for a surface reservoir. If there is no pressing need to build the surface reservoir, we can keep the LPH there for longer. And when there's a need to move a, move the LPH away, we can consider other options such as using the materials for the other facilities in the reply. As Doctor Lo said, Southeast Asia may also need those MIC modules. So we can consider whether to sell those MIC modules to other places. Now, on public rental housing, we use concrete for the MIC. This is different from the use of steel materials for steel-based MIC. We can work with our colleagues on the use of the modules on construction sites. Over time, the LPH flats will stop their service and we will plan ahead about what to do with those materials. Doctor, Mister Kitson Young.
I'd like to follow up on HB O five six, O five um eight and O five nine. We will see an increase in the number of public housing units built in the coming ten years. That's allowed um government policy to be more flexible. For this round of um GSH flats left, they are mostly uh small units. All the larger units have been taken up. Last week, I looked at the remaining number of um GSH flats. And I feel that there is a chance that um there will be leftover. You say, you see that people mostly need um large GSH flats. So will you provide more um large flats? Or would you increase the proportion of large GX- GSH flats in the future? My second question is about uh GSH flats as well. Secretary mentioned that we saw an oversubscription rate of twenty times for GSH flats. Every year, we got uh some forty thousand applicants. So the oversubscription rate is more or less the same every year. Can the government roll out more subsidized sale flats or GSH flats for people? People will return their PRH units as they move into GSH flats, and this will help people move up the housing ladder. Now, on O five eight, it's about window and building inspections. Nine hundred and the, nine hundred twenty of the statutory notices issued have not been complied with. And only four percent of the people who did not comply with the notices were prosecuted. For window inspection, the prosecution rate is about five point five percent only. Why is the prosecution rate so low? Building inspections and window inspections are crucial. They help ensure fire safety. With a high non-compliance rate, it may cause fire hazards in the future. Now, the cash allowance trial scheme will be extended by one year. You will retain thirty-five non-directorate posts by the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-five. Why are you keeping so many non-directorate staff if you're going to end the scheme a year later? Three questions, Secretary.
Let me first respond to the questions about HOS flats and GSH flats on window inspections. I will invite um Mister Lau from the Independent Checking Unit to tell you more. Mister Mmm will also elaborate.
Now, we are working on HOS flat sale twenty twenty-three. We wrote out some nine thousand HOS flats. I am looking at the sales numbers every day. Yesterday night, I see that um over seventy-five percent of the HO flats, HOS flats have been sold.
Compared with the sales exercise last year, the number of flats sold is more or less the same. Indeed, we're seeing a more flats sold this year. So I am confident that the HO flats, HOS flats that we have wrote out are very attractive. We still have a lot of people yet to see the HOS flats. And so for those who are interested in purchasing an HOS flat, they can still go and see the flats themselves. Mr. Lau. Thank you, Chairman. On building and window inspections, the Independent Checking Unit looks at the compliance rate. The compliance rate has been high. Owners Corporation and Management Property Companies have been complying with the notices as at last year, we issued fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty MSIB notices. Nine hundred and twenty issues have yet to be complied with. The compliance rate has been up to ninety percent for the non-compliance cases. The issues have just been issued recently. There are a lot of steps to completing building inspections. People have to engage experts to inspect buildings as well as submit reports. And then they engage qualified contractors to carry out building repair works or building inspections. Even in non-compliance cases, we see that the owners' corporations have been taking actions to comply, try to comply with the inspection scheme. Compliance rate for window inspection is up to ninety, ninety-four percent. The eleven thousand six hundred and forty issues that have yet to be complied with, these notices have just been issued recently. Last year, we issued sixteen thousand six hundred statutory notices for the window inspection scheme. And a lot of them have just been issued recently. And people involved are now taking actions to follow up on the notices. Deputy Secretary, we need thirty-five non-directorate offices for the cash allowance trial scheme because the scheme will run until June twenty twenty-five. So by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, we still need staff to disperse the cash allowance. Next, Mr. Lam Ching Seung. I'd like to follow up on HB oh one-one, a question from Mr. Vincent Chang about starter home scheme. The scheme benefits those with higher income to gain ownership. Now, we see a sluggish property market. Would that affect the sales of starter home scheme flats? For instance, E Residence Tower Three has just seen sixty percent of the flats sold recently. In the future, we will see four to five such SH projects going to be rolled out. Have you assessed how the recent property market will affect the sales of these SH flats? Would you consider lowering the prices of SH flats? Or would you relax the assignment restrictions? In Chunuan, there is another SH flat, but because of the failing of the tender exercise, the Housing Society is taking up the project. But the Housing Society has a lot of projects to take forward. So they are under pressure. And the project in Chunuan is quite complex. Can the Housing Society take up the project in Chunuan? And what would the timetable look like? Another question is oh-two-nine from Laotong Kuok. On the LTCO, the government set up six district service teams under the ordinance. And the service teams help distribute leaflets and set up street booths. Within two years' time, the service teams visited some three thousand subdivided unit households, which is a small number if you look at the total number of SDU households we have in Hong Kong. We have seen a lot of overcharging cases for water in SDU households. That's why we saw the passage of the Water Works Amendment Bill earlier. Do you think the district service teams have met their target? Well, back then, we didn't have the district care teams. We didn't have that many district councillors. Now we've seen the improved electoral system being put in place. I understand that members of the district care teams are reaching out to SDU tenants. Organizations that have been operating the community living rooms are also trying to reach out to SDU tenants. The operating cost is eighteen million dollars for the district service teams, which is not a high amount, but is there overlapping of the use of resources? Secretary. On starter home projects, we have PRH units for rental, and we also have private housings. We have private, we have subsidized sales flats as well. People have to meet certain requirements in order to purchase starter home flats. These people cannot own any properties in Hong Kong. For those who opt for SH flats, for instance, E Residence, about eighty-five percent of purchases are below forty years old. So that means these SH flats are popular among young families or young residents. We still have sixty-six thousand SH flats to be rolled out. Those who are qualified to purchase SH flats, of course, they would see a lowering of the prices. But we have to look at the cost-effectiveness of the project. For instance, URA as well as Housing Society, which is taking up the Yaokam Tong project in Chunuan. We have to consider their views. We also look at the property prices in the same district. Some nineteen hundred units will be offered in the Yaokam Tong project taken up by the Hong Kong Housing Society. We also have to deal with some infrastructural facilities. We work with the Housing Society as a team. We try to solve all the problems and difficulties we encounter to ensure smooth delivery of the project. As for the district service team set up under the LTCO landlord and tenant ordinance. I have visited the community living rooms myself. So district care teams and district service teams, they really complement each other. I'll invite Ms. Wong to tell you more about the district service team. In twenty twenty-two, when the landlord and tenant consolidation ordinance came into effect, we set up the district service teams. There are six of them. Are people satisfied with their performance? Well, apart from visiting SDU households, they do other types of promotional work. They set up street booths, they distribute leaflets, and they hold briefings. After we engaged district service team in twenty twenty-two, we saw COVID pandemic. So they couldn't visit a lot of SDU households. After we hired them in twenty twenty-two, well, we signed a three-year contract with them. We'll see after the expiry of the contract whether we will renew the contract. So we will look into it. Thank you.
Ms. Carmen Khan. Chairman, I'm a member of the Housing Authority. The government's support for the inadequately housed is close to my heart. I welcome the task force on tackling issues about subdivided units. The task force engaged a consulting firm to visit SDU households. This shows the government's resolve, and the government is consulting people. I want to follow up on oh-six-four and oh-four-one. First, oh-six-four. The government's reply mentioned visiting SDU households in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, three thousand eighty households visits, visited. That's fewer than the number in twenty twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, which was four thousand two hundred ninety-one. I see a decrease in the number of households visited. And I think there is now joined, a joint visit done by the RVD and the WSD. How are joint visits working? Three thousand cases of suspected contraventions of the LTCO were spotted. The recent fire at New Lucky House shows the problems with old buildings and subdivided units. So for this task force, will there be a centralized platform? Every government department conducts professional visits on their own. The RVD looks at certain irregularities, the WSD looks at water charges. But when you come across building safety hazards or fire safety issues, can we have a centralized platform for notification to improve enforcement efficiency? Oh-four-one, and this is about the subsid, the pilot scheme on private participation in SSFs. The pricing is sixty-five percent of the market price. This is different from the pricing for HOS flats. So I would like an explanation how this works. Now, for HOS flats, it's just the affordability test. Affordability is the only factor without considering interest rates and construction costs. So will there be a review of the pricing mechanism for HOS flats? And also for the pilot scheme for private subsidized sale flat, will there be adjustments in lighter market conditions? Now, first, the pricing of the pilot scheme for private subsidized sale flats. I will address that point, and then Mr. Kevin Seal from the RVD can tell us more about the joint visits. For the pilot scheme, the pricing is sixty-five percent of market price. HOS flats, sixty-two percent of market price. This means the pilot scheme flats will come with higher, albeit slightly higher prices. It's a three percentage difference. This is an encouragement to private developers. We want private developers to be more creative in their project. Half of the applicants of HOS flats are young families. So we want the private developers to offer more attractive flats. That's why we allow private developers a slightly higher price at sixty-five percent of market price. Now, for the pricing of HOS flats, it's linked to the affordability rate on whether there's room for adjustment for HOS flat prices. We thank the member for her comments on whether there's room for adjustment. Mr. Kevin Seal can tell us more about the joint visits. So to clarify, for the private, rather the pilot scheme for private subsidized sale flats, the discount is slightly smaller. Is that the case? So for the pilot scheme, it's sixty-five percent of market price. So that's a smaller discount than you see with HOS flats. Mr. Kevin Seal. On the joint visits, the visits aim to promote the statutory requirements for landlords. The visits also seek to find out whether the tenants come across irregularities. Now, on the visits, there were three thousand or so irregularities. That's because in the first year of the ordinance's operation, we wanted to focus more on publicity. And then in the second year, we focused on the enforcement and prosecution. That's why there was a slight drop in the number of households visited. We will continue with the visits and joint visits with the WSD. With the Water Works Ordinance Amendment Bill passed, we have set up a reciprocal mechanism. So we can share information with the Water Supplies Department. This will improve the efficiency of investigation. Ms. Yunus Young. HB oh-oh-one, a question from Mr. Michael Lee. And this has to do with the appeal panel housing. In twenty twenty-three, nonoccupation, unauthorized occupation, the figure in twenty twenty-three was nine hundred and sixty, double the figure from twenty twenty-two. This points to success of the government's enforcement effort. This shows we spotted more problematic flats. In twenty twenty-three, there were more than five hundred confirmed cases. Of course, government inspections worked. How do we achieve even greater success in finding those flats involving nonoccupation and unauthorized occupation of flats? So how do we do even better in future inspections and information and evidence gathering? HB oh-oh-nine. This is about the transitional housing projects, the funding scheme to support transitional housing projects by NGOs. I'm looking at the percentage, some over ninety percent, some eighty percent. So how can we make better use of the underoccupied transitional housing flats? For those housing flat projects with just eighty percent of occupancy, how can we increase the occupancy rate? The rents vary from one thousand to five thousand dollars. Is this difference the result of different levels of government subsidies? Would this, or rather, does this affect the occupancy rate of transitional housing? Also for oh-oh-nine, there's a subsidy scheme for pilot scheme to subsidize using rooms in hotels and guest houses as transitional housing. For the use of hotel rooms or guest house rooms for transitional housing, some units see even lower occupancy rate, sixty-eight point nine percent or seventy-one percent. These occupancy rates are even lower than the transitional housing run by NGOs. Is there a weaker demand, or is it because of the efforts of the hotels' guest rooms running those transitional housing? Now, I turn to oh-two-nine about the district service teams. Different departments visit SDU households. Three thousand or so households were visited. With concerted efforts, SDU households now get more support. People learn more about SDU conditions. Does the Housing Bureau require the submission of information about S D U households? When each team works on its own silo, that will not be helpful for big data analysis by the government. So will the Housing Bureau work with other departments, other bureaus? Can we pull the data to avoid overlapping of resources? I'm not saying we should get rid of the care teams or service teams. Of course, we need more people, more teams to visit S D U residents. We need to make good use of resources. We also need to make sure the services we provide are effective. If I gave you four minutes, Miss Young, you would not even be able to get through all your questions. Please be brief. If every member asks long questions and other members waiting won't be able to speak, Secretary. I thank Miss Young for her question about the appeal panel for housing. The panels worked overtime and even over weekends on cases. The processing time went down from two point five months to one point eight months. So that's much greater efficiency. Now, how do we better identify units that are underoccupied or not occupied? We rolled out a declaration mechanism last year. Eighty eight thousand forms went out. The occupants had to declare that they were still occupying the units and they were occupying the units in accordance with the purpose stated. Penalties for breaches, that is for false declarations, are tough because that's a criminal offense. That's to highlight the point of occupying the units in accordance with the stated purpose. And for property management, that helps us spot the cases of abuse. Those property management firms get extra points. There is fierce competition between property management firms. The extra points can affect these firms' chances at the future tendering exercise. Now on the use of hotels and guest rooms for transitional housing, the occupancy rate reaches ninety five percent in both urban transitional housing projects and those in rural areas. There are six thousand transitional housing flats that will come out. For new transitional housing flats, we give them two to three months' time to get people to occupy those units. So within that short window, the figures may not show the ultimate occupancy rate. For guest rooms, their transitional housing flats see a lower occupancy rate at sixty percent or so. More units will, some units are in the midst, are in the process of negotiating renewal of tenancy. Once the tenancies are renewed, the occupancy rates will go up again. Now on district service teams, those teams explain transitional housing and light public housing to residents. On the sharing of such information, the task force on tackling the issue of subdivided units involves different departments. We all pull the information we have so that we get the full picture in our efforts. Doctor Wendy Hong, two questions. H B O two O. The question is about the projection of the housing seen in the next ten or twenty years, the ratio of public and private flats. The government replied that the government updates the housing projection under the long-term housing strategy for the next ten years. But it does not project the ratio of public and private ratio for the next ten years. I'm not surprised. We project the demand and then we supply the flats. This is typical thinking, demand-driven thinking. We look at what the market demands and then we provide. But we rarely think whether the demand makes sense. Unthinking and unthinking approach to meet the demand, does that make sense? Once the housing is built, the housing needs to stay there for fifty years. Resources are locked in and deciding what kind of housing we build. Let's think about this kinds of housing we will have. How many people will live in public rental housing units? How many will be able to move up the housing ladder and own their homes? How many can rent flats? The government simply said the long-term housing strategy does not take into account those factors. Our long-term housing strategy is not long-term. It's not even a strategy. It lacks a vision, it lacks a soul. Will the secretary review the approach of the L T H S and come up with a real long-term housing strategy? Now, reply O two one. I asked about the C A T S. For the last three years, we spent four point two five billion dollars for people waiting for P R H flats. The scheme will be extended for a year. I am against regularizing the C A T S. Some people think getting a P R H flat means they're all good. People think G S H flats and P R H flats as their best option. Some young people have given up, moved, working harder. Yesterday, Mister Tommy Chong said people decided not to look for a job because they want P R H flats. This applies not just to the catering sector. People have given up on moving up the social ladder. The C A T S makes waiting for P R H flats more attractive. Just forty eight percent of S D U residents can qualify for P R H flats. More than half of S D U residents do not qualify for P R H flats. Now there are C A T S. For those waiting for P R H flats, those who don't want P R H flats, no incentive. So we are penalizing people who don't want P R H flats while incentivizing those applying for P R H flats. So when will we look after the needs of the sandwich class, those who don't qualify for P R H flats?
Secretary, I do not agree to what Doctor Wendy Hong said that we lack a soul or a vision in our long-term housing strategy. We're not encouraging young people to lie flat. We look at the demand and needs of people as we formulated the long-term housing strategy. We need solid figures and statistics as we make the projections. We have to be flexible at the same time. The society is evolving, our economy is changing, the housing needs are also changing. In a previous debate on housing, we talked about this housing ladder for people. We talked about the change in people's needs and market. We looked at the needs of young families. We promised to look at the private housing split to cope with the future demands. Our P R H mechanism does not encourage young people to wait for P R H housing. Our marking scheme or scoring system does not encourage that our public housing is built to take care of the needs of those in the grassroots or elderly people who have retired and do not have a stable income. We want to provide a stable housing to these people. I thank Doctor Wendy Hong for raising her views and for noticing the phenomenon. We will continue to adjust our housing strategy to encourage young people to move up the housing ladder. So I thank a member for her views. Next, Professor Priscilla Lung. I have two questions, one about H B O five four and the other one is on O O four. First, on O five four, about the long-term housing strategy. When would the government review the public-private housing split of seventy to thirty? Over the past fifteen years, while I serve as the member of the Legislative Council, I am concerned about the redevelopment of old districts. Such redevelopment projects are crucial to provide a better living environment for people. I am glad to see that there is a redevelopment project to be taken forward in the Yaochimong District. There are many old and dilapidated buildings in the Yaochimong District and it affects people's livelihood. How can we strike a balance between people's living quality as well as ensuring economic benefits? We're seeing a serious fiscal deficit in Hong Kong. Two years ago, I put forward the redevelopment plan for Yaochimong District. The scale is not as large as Lentao tomorrow. Would bond issuance be an option for financing such redevelopment project? We don't need reclamation in Yaochimong District as we take forward redevelopment. Have you talked to stakeholders or people in the Yaochimong District so that they would consider investing in the redevelopment project? Large-scale redevelopment projects are implemented smoothly on the mainland. We can learn from their practice. Would you consider, for instance, issuing bonds to finance the projects? Would you allow residents who benefit from the redevelopment projects to hold shares, for instance? This is my first comment on redeveloping old districts. You mentioned building a river in the city. You mentioned about building or stepping up pedestrian links. You should seek people's views when you take forward these projects. Now on the seventy to thirty public housing, a public-private housing split, you should look at the market condition as you review the split. We do need public rental housing now. However, you should not blindly stick to the split. For instance, you announced the cancellation of demand-side management measures for residential properties, which is great. Secretary, two questions. Professor Lung mentioned about the redevelopment project in Yaochimong, which is taken forward by U R A and is under the purview of the Development Bureau. We also take forward a lot of redevelopment projects, for instance, that in Wafu Estate. We also announced the redevelopment projects in Choihong Estate. We will continue to review the conditions of old and dilapidated public housing estates. We need to put in a lot of money to carry out these redevelopment projects, but we will continue to review the state of our public housing estates. Now on the question about a public-private housing split, we want to stay flexible. We continue to review the market situation. Some say that we should adjust the seventy to thirty split and we will look into it. I have some time left, I have another question. You said that the redevelopment project falls under the purview of Development Bureau. Question O O four is about the building and window inspection scheme. The fire that we saw involves the Fire Services Department, H Y A B, as well as the Housing Bureau. Well, the Security Bureau is looking at mending the legislations. Would there be an interdepartmental mechanism to look into issues like these? The comment is clear. Perhaps, Secretary, you can give a very, very brief response. For inspections of private buildings, they fall under the purview of the Buildings Department. For some of the flats built by the Hong Kong Housing Authority, well, we worked with the Buildings Department and we asked the independent checking unit to follow up on the compliance of statutory notices. Next, Ms. Dorian Kong, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on O one O, a question from Vincent Chang about using guest houses and hotel rooms as transitional housings. Between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty four, hundred million dollars were spent to, on eight hundred and thirty eight projects involving thirty seven million dollars. Each guest house gets thirty two thousand dollars from the government on providing transitional housing. Now, apart from operating cost and environment, well, we see a lot of restrictions because cooking is not allowed in guest houses. According to the pilot scheme, no more new applications will be received. Individual guest house operators may submit applications. Given the fire that we saw recently, would you consider scrapping the idea of using guest houses as transitional housing? The other question is about the task force on tackling S D U issues. Are you supposed to submit or have the report ready by August this year? Three non-directorate staff have been engaged for the task force, including a senior executive as well as a surveying engineer. It seems very wasteful if you have to engage a new team of people to run the task force. Do you not have existing talents within the Housing Bureau? Another question is about the dismantling of modules in Namchun two two O and the relevant costs incurred. In your reply, you said that the modules have been transported to Won Yutang for transitional housing. However, in your contract, you did not specify how much money is spent on dismantling the modules in Namchun two two O. We have lots of L P H housing projects and transitional housing projects. How come you did not tell people about the reuse of M I C modules in the Won Yutang project? Four questions, Secretary. I will first answer the question on the task force on tackling the issues of subdivided units and the question about Won Yutang. And the questions in relation to guest houses and hotel rooms for transitional housing, I will ask Miss Wong to elaborate. On the task force on tackling the issue of subdivided units, we have ten months' time to carry out an in-depth study. The report will be submitted to the Chief Executive. Will the Chief Executive ask us to take follow-up actions after he reads the report? Well, we will look into that with the C E. We will publicize our views and results of the study in due course. We have talked to different political parties and different organizations and groups to collect their views. Well, S D U is a very complex issue. We are, however, determined to tackle the issues. We have to be careful as we accord priority in tackling the issue. Now on the reuse of M I C modules in light public housing projects. Now, on the reuse of MIC modules in light public housing projects, tech transitional housing projects, it is one way for us to reuse the MIC modules as we design the MIC modules or when we build the transitional housing units. Well, as you know, MIC modules were more widely used during COVID pandemic. We thought about whether we could reuse the modules back then, but we were at a very preliminary stage of reusing these modules. We weren't clear back then how it was technically feasible for us to reuse the modules. So back then, we didn't ask transitional housing to come up with the details of how to reuse the modules. We will keep in view the development of other projects to see how we can better reuse the modules to enhance the value of these modules.
Deputy Secretary, please be brief in your reply. The Housing Department has a team on SDUs. We will need three more officers for a reason. In the policy address last year, it was announced that a task force on tackling the issue of SDUs will be set up. A report needs to be submitted to the CE in ten months' time, so this team is on a time crunch. The three officers will work at the secretariat. After the working group submits the report, there will be follow-up work. So that's why we proposed three-year positions for these positions. Professor James Lau, Mr. Bill Tang, Mr. Stanley M, and Mr. Kenny Fu, three members. So I will need to strictly enforce the time limits. We can cover Mr. Stanley M, but I will be strict with the time limit. I want to let all three members speak. Professor James Lau. HB 033. It's about the stamp duty. We recently passed the bill. Most people called for dropping the cooling measures. We brought in those cooling measures in the first place to curb speculation in the market. I invite the government to pay attention to the situation to see if dropping those measures is in line with our purpose. We don't know what the short-term and long-term consequences will be after we drop those cooling measures. Say, one day, the market heats up again, home prices go up again. Do we bring back those cooling measures? So my point is there's private housing and private housing and public housing. Public housing caters to the needs of half the population. For the other half, many people don't qualify for public housing. But then, these cooling measures come and go. Not many people fall in this category. For people who are comfortable with affording private homes, these people are not huge in number. So my question is, apart from cooling measures, are there ways for us to achieve a goal where private housing can serve its purpose and meet the housing needs of people who don't qualify for public housing? Now, I want to commend the Housing Bureau for dealing with the car parks at public housing estates. There were luxury cars at those car parks. Even a run-of-the-mill cars at the car park will require two thousand dollars in parking fees per month. And that parking fee is higher than the public rental housing's rent. Some cars are just stopped there from Monday through Friday and people go on a ride only over weekends. Should we allow that? Or, there may be people who park their commercial vehicle at the car park of the public housing estate. Or do we let any resident of the estate use the car parks? Those car parks are next to a mall. Other people going to the mall can also may also need to use the car park. So is there a better way to use those car parks? The first two questions can go to the Secretary. The third point is more about the suggestion. Secretary, please focus on the first two questions. Half of Hong Kong's housing is private, the other half is public. We need to strike a balance. The property market is part of the economy. It's also about livelihood. There's a dynamic balance. The property market is vulnerable to external economic environment. One factor is the interest rate. The rate can affect the property market. We need to observe those changes with care. At the debate about the cooling measures that were used, we need those frameworks that allowed us to impose the cooling measures. We need to be prepared by having those tools. We need to keep an eye on this all the time. I also thank Professor Lau for his comment about car parks. Mr. Bill Tang. Two questions. 064. Many members raised follow-up questions based on HB 064 about subdivided units. Joint visits covered roughly three thousand SDU households, but there are a hundred thousand SDU households. So the visits, in terms of a number, is far from enough. The compliance rate with AR2 forms is far from satisfactory. I have been laboring this point. There is the cash allowance trial scheme. Then, grassroots families may be also on the CSSA textbook allowance and other forms, working family allowance. If you can put these bits of information together, you can tell someone is in an SDU household. So my question is, there may be broader policies in the future, but for now, can we pull the information we already have on residents and do more proactive enforcement? Now, for people on the CATS, do we require these people to declare that they are living in SDUs? Isn't there a responsibility on these people to declare whether they live in SDUs? Civil servants have their plate full. I would rather have civil servants focus more on prosecution rather than inspection. So can we have an integrated approach through the administration? Many people waiting for PLH flats know that in 2024 to 25, there will be certain new PLH estates. But those units come up or show up as PLH slash GSH flats. So people were expecting new PLH flats in an area, only to find out those flats become GSH flats. So can people know for sure whether, say, the flats to be completed next year will be PLH instead of GSH flats? I don't think there's enough transparency for residents or people waiting for those flats. So two questions, enforcement for SDUs and PLH versus GSH flats. Those are some suggestions from the member, food for thought. Now, on tendency control for SDUs, we will see if there's room for raising the key performance indicators for the visits. The member also suggested sharing information from different departments. We can think about ways to make use of the information. Now, on GSH flats, in deciding whether in a state will be GSH flats, we look at the circumstances at the time, we look at the conditions of the district. If some flats are to become GSH flats, they need to be separated from the PLH flats. People want to know early on whether some flats will become GSH flats rather than PLH flats. We need to first find out about the construction site conditions and the demand is applied before we can decide. Chairman, in 2024 to 25, for newly completed PLH flats, the information still shows up as PLH slash GSH flats. We still don't know whether those flats will be PLH or GSH flats. And that makes it hard for people to plan, so that's a comment from the member. We try to provide that information as early as we can. Last one to speak, Mr. Stanley M. Thank you, Chairman. I thank the government for giving detailed replies. For people on the CATS, it's good to have this subsidy for those applicants because this CATS is a way to get the government to step up on public housing supply. Now, I turn to HB 045 and 048. It's about the facilities at light public housing units. The government said vacant school premises would be repurposed. From community living rooms, we can see there's a need for facilities. People want laundry facilities. Will the government heed the calls for laundry facilities at light public housing? Now, I turn to HB 048. And that's the task force on tackling the issue of subdivided units. We are trying to have more people on the task. The government has committed money to this task. The government needs to show that, show people that the government is serious, it's more than just rhetoric. Now, the resources are there, the people are there. How will the work be carried out? Is there a timetable for addressing the issues around SDUs? This task force will do an in-depth study, a report will be produced, and then there will be a review. Let's avoid creating the impression that the government is taking a wait-and-see approach. Can we have a timetable? Say, in a certain number of years, we can fix the current problems. Thank you. Secretary, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. M. On the issues of SDUs, I believe you can all see the determination of the government to tackle issues of SDUs. We have already started talking to different groups and organizations to collect different data. It is a complicated issue. We have to tread carefully. We hope to collect views on what kind of standard which is set for subdivided units. If the standard is set too low, it would be meaningless because our ultimate goal is to eradicate substandard or SDUs with very poor living environment. However, if we set the standard too high, it might affect SDU tenants. Next step, we will think about how to eradicate SDUs in an orderly manner. We might need a legislative framework. We will definitely include a timetable in the report to be submitted to the Chief Executive. The CE will tell us whether we need to adjust our measures or directions proposed in the report. And as we publicize the report, we will tell the public about our timetable and what we will do moving forward. I'd like to thank members for your concern about SDUs. The impression I get is that you want us to show concerted efforts in tackling issues of SDUs. Thank you. We've wrapped up our session today. Thank you, government representatives, and thank you, members. The next session will begin at 2 PM. Thank you.